Thank you, staff. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning, everyone, guests and staff and council. We'll call this meeting to order. Under item number 1.1, we have a land acknowledgement. We'll turn it over to Counsel Delaio for that, counselor.
Thank you. Land acknowledgement. We begin our meeting by recognizing the First Nations Métis and Inuit Peoples of Canada as traditional stewards and caretakers of the land. We acknowledge that the town of Wasaga Beach is located within the boundaries of Treaty 18, the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudeninanshuni, Tihonantati, Wendat, and is the home of many First Nations Métis and Inuit Peoples as part of an intricate nationhood. and is the home of many First Nations Métis and Inuit Peoples as part of an intricate nationhood that reaches across Turtle Island. At this time of truth and reconciliation, we welcome the opportunity to work together towards new understandings and new relationships and ask for guidance in all we do.
Thank you, Counselor Delaio. We move on into item number two, disclosure of pecuniary interests. I do have two before me. One is item 6.3.2, Deputy Mayor Snell, and this is in relation to the fact that she has investment properties that back onto the lands. And then the second one is Counselor Belage, item 6.4.2, 6.4.2 with respect to Grants, the Curling Club and United Church, in which he is a member of both of those organizations. Is there anyone else who has a pecuniary interest to claim? If at some point throughout the meeting you do, let us know at that time, please. Moving on to item number three, open forum. We have no one listed here for open forum today, so we'll move on. And moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda. I have a resolution resolved that the contents of the agenda for February 16th, 2023 be approved as circulated. Questions or comments? Seeing none, can I have a mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor Snell, Counselor White, all in favor? That is carried unanimously. Moving on to item number five, deputations, presentations, petitions in public meetings. We do have two today. Item number 5.1 is a presentation, and we do have representatives from MPAC with us today, so ladies, if you could join us up here, that would be great. Good morning, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Nicola France, and I'm the Account Manager with Municipal and Stakeholder Relations at MPAC. I'd like to take a minute and congratulate all council members on their elections. I look forward to working with you throughout 2023 and beyond. We are here to help. We do have a whole municipal and stakeholder relations team who can answer any questions that you have. Next slide, please. Perfect, thank you. So at MPAC, we are Ontario's property experts. Our job is to assess and classify more than 5.5 million properties across Ontario worth a combined value of more than $3 trillion. In the past year, Ontario has grown by approximately 45,000 new residential homes, and in 2022, we added more than $37 billion to Ontario's assessment rolls. Every municipality uses our assessments to make informed decisions about their community, including the distribution of property taxes. Ontario's property tax system and these assessments generate approximately $30 billion in tax revenue annually. There are four key players in Ontario's property assessment and taxation system, and all have a different role and interest in this process. The provincial government, specifically the Ministry of Finance, is responsible for setting assessment and taxation legislation as well as policies. They also determine the education property tax rate. There is an independent body that adjudicates appeals of MPAC's assessed values, the ARB, otherwise known as the Assessment Review Board. MPAC is an independent, not-for-profit corporation funded by all Ontario municipalities. Our role is to accurately assess and classify all properties in Ontario. We do this in compliance with the Assessment Act and regulations set by the Government of Ontario. We are accountable to the province, municipalities, and property taxpayers of Ontario through a board of directors that is comprised of provincial, municipal, and taxpayer representatives appointed by the Minister of Finance. And municipalities, they of course determine the budget requirements, set tax rates, and collect property taxes to pay for municipal services. Municipalities use MPAC's assessments and the established tax rates to distribute their tax requirement to ratepayers. And lastly, property owners. They pay the property tax bill and help set market value through ongoing property purchases and sales. So as you can imagine, maintaining Ontario's property database is very important. Property data is continuously updated so that municipal records are accurate when our municipal stakeholders are making important tax decisions. Maintaining Ontario's property database includes inspecting and assessing new construction, additions, and renovations promptly, responding to property owner inquiries, and working to help them understand their assessment, and supporting municipalities. We offer Municipal Connect, which is where our municipal stakeholders can obtain the primary source of assessment-related information. We have important statutory duties such as handling requests for reconsideration, which we also call RFRs, and maintaining people data by tracking school support for over 5.5 million properties. So monitoring the market and assessing newly built and renovated properties are things that we do every day to keep our property data current. We also periodically update every single property assessment in Ontario based on the same legislated valuation date. This is called an assessment update or a reassessment. The valuation date for the most recent assessment update, which took place in 2017, is January 1st of 2016. This is when we determined what every single property in Ontario could have reasonably sold for in its current state and condition at that particular point in time. Regular revaluation of properties ensures that assessments stay up to date, and similar properties of similar value in the same municipality pay similar amount of taxes. Provincial legislation determines when MPAC conducts each province-wide assessment update and sets the valuation date for each update cycle. The reassessment that was scheduled to occur in 2020 was postponed by the province to provide stability and certainty to Ontarians and to enable municipalities to focus on responding to the challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result, property assessments continue to be based on the legislated valuation date of January 1st, 2016. MPAC continues to maintain and update the assessment rule to reflect changes such as new construction and improvements to properties. For new buildings or structures, MPAC determines a value as of January 1st, 2016 to ensure equity when comparing to existing properties. Ontario's property tax system is based on everyone paying their portion of what it costs to deliver community services. To do this, all properties are assigned a value at a common valuation date, as noted on the previous slide. This principle is called current value assessment. This is the price a property might reasonably be expected to sell if sold by a willing seller to a willing buyer after the appropriate time and exposure on an open market. So let's talk briefly about valuation. In Ontario, there are three industry-wide standardized approaches to valuing properties. The first of these approaches is the direct comparison approach, and this valuation approach is used primarily for residential properties, condos, and vacant land. With this approach, we analyze recent sales of comparable properties that were sold for similar or identical use as the property to be valued to provide an indication of value. It is also important that only valid open-market transactions are used in our analysis. When we're looking at the valuation of a residential home, although our analysis tool considers over 200 factors, the above five factors make up approximately 85% of a typical home's value. And they include location, lot dimensions, exterior square footage, quality of construction of the home, and the age of the property, which gets adjusted for any major renovations or additions that have occurred. Next is the income approach. This approach is used for industrial malls, large medical and dental buildings, office buildings, shopping centers, and even large sports stadiums. In income-producing properties, the ability to earn revenue is directly tied to its current value. To value these properties, we need to determine how much revenue it could generate, as well as the sale price. To clarify, it's not the revenue being generated by the occupant, but rather the rent that the occupant is paying the landlord that we use to value properties using the income approach. This method requires a detailed analysis of income and expenses, both for the property being valued and other similar properties, to determine how much income a property could be expected to generate if sold on the open market. Those two factors create a capitalization rate that helps us determine the property's assessed value. And lastly, is the cost approach. And is typically used for general-purpose industrial properties, small retail, and warehousing, just to name a few. This approach is used when a property type is unique and rarely sold on the open market, as we cannot rely on either the direct comparison approach or the income approach to determine its current value due to lack of data. The cost approach is a three-step process. First, we calculate the cost of replacing buildings, structures, and other assessable fixtures on the land. Then we apply deduction for depreciation on all structures due to age, as well as any functional or economic adjustments. And finally, we determine the value of the land and add it to the building calculations to produce an overall valuation. So what draws our attention to a property? It's typically one of the following things: a market sale, a request from the municipality or property owner, building permit activity, an RFR, or an appeal. MPAC's role is to take building permits and plans and turn them into assessment. Our municipal stakeholders rely on MPAC assessments to levy property tax. The sooner MPAC can deliver assessment, the sooner our municipal stakeholders can realize new revenue. Every year, MPAC processes, on average, 300,000 building permits for new development or renovations. We are the only organization with a dataset of all building permits in Ontario, and our understanding of this data gives us a unique perspective on ways to modernize its collection and exchange to support our municipal partners. Here are some insights based on the data that we've captured. In 2021, Ontario saw more than 48,000 new residential homes constructed, with just under 50% being single-detached homes. Did you know that condos are getting smaller, but detached homes are getting larger? Ontario condominiums are 35% smaller on average than they were 25 years ago, while the average detached home is 25% larger. So in the 1990s, the average condominium in Ontario peaked at approximately 1,100 square feet, and the most recent MPAC data shows the average condo today is about 700 square feet. In comparison, single-family detached homes were approximately 2,000 square feet in the mid-'90s, and today, a typical single-family home is around 2,500 square feet. So after we assess a property or change an assessment, we mail the property owner a property assessment notice. And sometimes, property owners do not agree with our assessed values. A property owner might connect with you to let you know that they disagree with our assessment, but it's important to remember that property assessments are not taxation. If you do get an inquiry, you can help us by asking the owner a few questions. First being, if they could have sold their property on January 1st, 2016 for the assessed value? Next, if they visited About My Property to review the information MPAC has on file regarding their property to ensure that it's accurate? Third, if they've used About My Property to conduct comparable research on assessment values in their area? And lastly, if a property owner still disagrees with their assessment, they do have the option to file a request for reconsideration, and we'll review it free of charge. There is also an ability to file an appeal with the Assessment Review Board. The fastest way to start a review is by filing the RFR through About My Property, but property owners can also file through MPAC.ca. So let's spend a moment to address the relationship between property taxes and assessment. Assessments distribute taxes; they do not determine the taxes paid. When a province-wide assessment update occurs, the most important factor is not how much the assessed value of a property has changed, but rather how the assessed value has changed relative to the average change in class in that community. This concept is explained in a recent MPAC toolkit that has been shared with municipalities. In anticipation of the next province-wide reassessment, we have implemented a strategy to address misconceptions about the relationship between assessed value and taxation, including resources for municipalities that will ensure when an announcement is made, we're ready with the support that you need. This digital toolkit is available on MPAC.ca and can help municipalities, including yourselves elected officials, mitigate misinformation and provide support and resources to educate and inform property owners. In the digital toolkit, you'll find a new video, and it's titled "How Your Property Taxes Are Calculated Based on the Assessed Value of Your Home." It is a great video, which I highly recommend you take the three minutes to watch. I just want to say thanks for having me here today. If not already, please make sure that you subscribe to In Touch, which is our municipal monthly e-newsletter, and that can be done through MPAC.ca. And we also have a library of digital resources available. And please be sure to reach out to myself, your account representative, at any time if you do have any further questions or are looking for any particular resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Great presentation. We appreciate that. Questions or comments from council for Nicole? Counselor Delaio?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question for him a little sketchy on this. So next year, you're going to assess the property tax, the properties, correct? Is it next year?
We do not have a reassessment date as of yet. We're waiting for guidance from the provincial government.
Okay. But when you do, are you going to assess them from the value of the homes at that time?
We will assess them for the valuation date that the provincial government provides for us. So currently, they're assessed as of January 1st, 2016. So when we do find that date, that's the date that they would be assessed for the value if they could sell on that.
On that particular day?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Belage?
Thank you. Just a question on, on single dwellings getting larger. Is that, is that based on finished square footage? Or is it just main level and the basements not included in that, just out of curiosity?
I believe it'd just be the finished square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I do have a couple. Nicole, so just to Counselor Belage's point, there's finished square footage. So that does include the basement then if it's finished. Is that correct?
If it's finished, then correct.
All right, thank you. And the last assessment was 2016. The province has given you folks no indication at this point, I assume, as to when they want the next assessment done?
That's correct. We are waiting for them to announce when the new assessment, reassessment date will be.
So is it, is it a fair statement that homeowners are going to be somewhat shocked on the next assessment based on increases in, in values over the last several years since 2016?
Well, values will reflect that of the, the change that has occurred between 2016 and whenever this new valuation date is. So they can expect to see what's the market trends at that time for their assessment. But it's important to remember that if your assessment doubles, doesn't mean your taxes are going to double. Assessment's just an indication used to disperse taxes.
Great. Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, we'll move on to our, oh, sorry, I do have a resolution that council received a presentation from MPAC for information. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, a mover in a second, or please? Moved by Counselor Delaio, seconded by Counselor Ego, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our second presentation today, which was the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture. They are no longer presenting today. We'll hopefully have them back at another point. And then our third presentation today, deputation is. deputation is Mr. Marcus Ludlow and Nancy Ludlow, Rea Business Opportunity. Marcus, come on forward. Mum's not here?
No, she couldn't make it. Sorry, Your Worship.
Turn your mic on there. Thanks, Marcus.
Sorry, I'm touched, nervous, haven't done this before. Your Worshipmen, everyone, I'd like to congratulate you guys all on your election, and nice to see some new faces and some faces that I've seen before. I'm here today to present an idea to promote tourism. I sent an email out yesterday that unfortunately, I think I made a mistake that didn't reach you guys. So I'll briefly give you a little bit of a history of what I've done over the last 20 years with the town. I'm a resident of Wasaga Beach in life, and 20 of those years, I ran Wasaga Wave Runners, which was the largest PWC jet ski rental business in Canada. Through those years, I noticed that there's been a decline in things for, you know, mostly kids to do in the town. What I'm presenting today is, it's actually an aqua water park that's... it's permanent, and it's like a... if you've seen them before, there's one in Barry, there's one in Muskoka, one in Arilla. And I think there's some positive things that could bring to the town, not only as a destination, just to bring people into the town to enjoy some of the other businesses, but something for our local residents to do as well. With the jet ski rentals, it was great, but again, it was a higher price point, and it didn't appease kind of our younger generation, kids and things like that. What I propose is, it's a smaller version than the one maybe that you've seen in Barry or one that you're used to. I don't have any pictures because they didn't really do it justice. But what it is, is like a floating obstacle course that stays in one section, and it's very, very kid-friendly. And it... the price point's going to be very low, like I'm starting at, you know, the $20 range for people. And it seems to be being very successful in other municipalities, and I thought that Wasaga Beach should be, you know, leading kind of the cause of activities like that for the area. I've got three proposed locations. I haven't been able to confirm those yet because I didn't know whether the town was going to go for it or not. But I think it is a great idea. I don't know if anybody is aware of what the... what I'm kind of getting at is the activities. But my background is owner of the jet skis for 20 years. We ran it successfully, only having one insurance claim. So safety is at the forefront of what I do as far as running a tourism business. And I find that this will fill a void that a lot of people have expressed to me while I've ran my other businesses. And I was looking for the town to get permission to kind of go forward with this, because I've kind of gone backwards. I've talked to the MVCA, I've talked to the TSSA, they're all on board. There's no environmental footprint, which is a big deal for me. There's no... there won't be any added congestion to the river because it doesn't move, and it doesn't actually impede with any of the traffic since it'll be... It'll sit narrower than what a 40-foot boat would be on a dock. So what I'm proposing is to be able to find the location, which I've got three different people that are willing to allow me to do it, that will suffice with parking and accessibility. And actually, will be... a couple of the spots are away from the main corridor, which I've found some families don't like to go down into the main part of Wasaga Beach, which will help with younger kids to be able to use the facilities that we're going to offer. One of my... the things that owning the jet skis allowed me to do is I've made a great experience for people to come to Wasaga Beach, and that's been my major priority. Second priority is safety, which is a big initiative of mine. So I think that if someone was going to run it, I think I'd be the perfect person to run this for it, from my experience and knowing how to use... Knowing how to respond to big groups of people and make sure their experience is very memorable and puts a positive outlook on the town in general. But presentation doesn't really have more to do than that. It's really... it's basically just looking for permission to move forward with my ideas so I can start my own business again as I've gotten away from the jet skis with the motors and boats and things like that. I have a captain's license, which allows me to do a 50-ton, 12-crew vessel, so I'm very familiar with anything to do with the water. And yeah, that's kind of what I'm here to present to you today, to basically get permission from you guys to move forward with this, go through all the proper steps which you guys would want me to do and make sure that we do it safely. And I think it'd just be a great opportunity for the town to, again, bring more fun and get this town back to where we once were as far as a destination for fun and, you know, ground zero for summer activities.
Thank you very much, Marcus. Questions or comments? Counselor White?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, through you. Sorry, you mentioned briefly sites, and you had said the word "river." I was just kind of curious. You're planning on putting a floating amusement park in the river?
Well, there's a reason for that. I mean, obviously, the bay would be the best. It just seems that as far as getting people back and forth from the bay will be tough. And with the weather, when the waves whip up, it likely will destroy the apparatus. I'm not sure how durable they'd be with the... the waves get pretty demonstrative out there and can wreck it. And that's why I wanted to make sure the models that they have... There's many different versions that you can order, and you can kind of do it custom-wise. And I've taken that to an account to make sure it fits within a break wall... The break wall width of whatever property I would be using and making sure that it's stuck, it doesn't go out further than any docks would be that would suffice for like a 40-foot boat. So I've taken all that into consideration. With my experience on being on the river for so long, my whole life, 43 years, I know the problems that may arise from that, and I've made sure to stroke those off the list to make sure that there wouldn't be any impediment of traffic or any safety issues as far as having kids on the river.
Counselor, go ahead.
You know, at first level, I love the idea. I think it's a great... I've seen the one in Barry. I've seen them in other municipalities, and I know that they work great. And Barry's a great place for it because of the sheltered, kept in felt bay. I'm very concerned about the river location for your business and the fact that it's not... The water quality is not monitored in the river as it is in the bay. And I know we have a blue flag designation for our water quality in the bay. But in the river, it's not monitored, and I live on the river as well and lost a few docks and seen the bad boating that happens on the river. And I'd be very, very concerned about the safety. So I'd be interested to see what locations you had in mind to make this work.
Yeah, I've taken that definitely into considerations. I don't know if I've had... I've heard of anybody running into any docks, maybe once in every 20 years. And I've made sure that they actually stick in closer than that, and I think it actually is safer. And I know that tests were done... I know, I remember a fellow named Mr. Fennec used to test both the river and the bay as far as water quality, and they actually tested the same as far as cleanliness. The misconception with the river is because it's a sand bottom and it gets whipped up a lot from the boats, it seems like it may be a little less clean than the bay, but it actually tested the exact same quality as the beach. So as far as water quality, I don't think that would be an issue. And as far as the safety measures come, I plan on putting in place some protective barriers that will stick out, again, not as far as some of the boats do on the docks. I'm going to have... I plan on staffing for every five customers, I plan on having a lifeguard to oversee that. And with doing the jet skis, I used to take 20 units out per hour, which is far more... I don't want to use the word "dangerous," but there's a lot more risk involved in doing that as far as a stable spot. And the good thing is too, is it's brightly colored, right? And I think with the right precautions, which I would, you know, refer to you guys and then some other people that you know, the bylaw and things, and see what they end, and make sure I appease them. But I've taken that into great consideration. And with my experience on the water, I think that myself would be the best representative to be able to do that safely and to make sure that all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. So that's definitely something that I take into consideration, and I think that it is doable. Another thing is the locations that I have... excuse me, would be in the no-wake zone. It's basically near Wasaga Marine where there isn't any residents that are directly across, so that won't, you know, affect too many people as far as noise and stuff. And we don't plan on being open later than, you know, 6:00 PM, if that helps at all.
All right. Counselor White, one last point?
Yeah, no, I'd answered my questions. It sounds like an interesting concept. I can't wait to see the final proposal.
All right. I've seen Counselor Ego's hand, and then Counselor DeLeo.
Thank you, Your Worship. Interesting presentation, and really, Counselor White addressed everything I was kind of thinking about. Other... and you did there. The only comment I would have, but you're the waterman. It wouldn't be anywhere near the mouth of the river. We all know that's where our great undertow is.
Exactly. And with the... I've always found, and I actually, with the wave runner rentals and the way that they operate or the way that they should be operating, is I've actually put those safety precautions in place and wrote proposals for the bylaw. I actually put those safety procedures in place myself. So no one's more concerned with safety, especially with children. I have two small kids of my own. And the problem is, is the beach is great and everyone loves it, but there's only so many times you can go swimming where, you know, kind of, the effect wears off. And I hear over and over again, people leaving our area, which, you know, affects our restaurant. It affects a whole bunch of stuff from them having to leave town where they're spending money elsewhere, where a lot of the businesses suffer here. And I think that, like my jet skis, it will become a destination spot all on its own, where we had a lot of people just come into the area just to see us. Because of the atmosphere and the great experience they had, we had return customers that would come spend their money here, enjoy the resources that the town has naturally. And I'm fully committed in making sure that it's a great experience, not only for my business, but for the town itself, because I'm born and raised here and have a lot of pride in being from Wasaga Beach.
Counselor DeLeo?
Thank you, Marcus. You've answered my question earlier with Counselor White. I personally, I love the idea. I would have loved to have had an indoor water park where we can use it all year round.
That would be fantastic.
That would have been amazing, but I like your idea.
And I also wrote an email, again, that kind of gave the background on what I've done over my life. But again, it got sent... I... that's... I'm not very computer literate, if that's an excuse. Well, it is an excuse, but hopefully, I can get that sent off to you where you can see a little bit of my background and where I come from, and you can be assured that it will be run safely and we will appease anything that the town needs to see done. I just think that if any other municipality can pull it off, I think Wasaga Beach should be the forerunner in Ontario on doing things like that. And I think that that's what we're lacking here, because we are... Even with our retail sector, we find a lot of people have been just trained to leave town, you know? And I think that we're going to have to, you know, start making people stay here and not have to...
Marcus, I'm going to... Believe me, you've sold us here, I think, so it's... You don't have to keep selling us. I'm going to get to the questions.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll make some recommendations here possibly. Counselor Belanger?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Obviously, the timing of this is very good in that our splash pad will not be active this season. But I have two questions. Is... one, have you investigated the cost of insurance at this point?
Everything is in place. I've actually done this backwards, because in past... with past councillors, they've left it where I have to order the product and to make sure that it fits and appeases what we need as far as safety and things. So yeah, I've done... I've got insurance covered. I've talked to the MVCA. I've talked to the TSSA. From my experience with the jet skis and being on the water, I tried to cover all that in the email, which didn't make it to you guys, so I apologize for that. But yeah, everything is done except for the approval.
Okay, and my last question through, Your Worship, is that... I'm not... I'm not sure in Barry whether it's a private company or not, but the jurisdiction, like obviously, wherever you're going to locate, you may have an on-land facility or whatever that you're renting or whatever. But who is the jurisdiction of the river? And is that a revenue generator? Like, is there... would there be rent paid for...
So we're going to look to our Director of Public Works to answer the question on jurisdiction. I guess it'll be the River Bed. Is that right, Kevin?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Yeah, the River Bed is the Ministry of Natural Resources, but it's really... from the town's perspective, we're involved because we mark the river with navigation buoys, and so we have to follow the legislation around the marking of that buoys. But it would be more of a matter of a licensing discussion, but certainly, there's different agencies that would be engaged through the process.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. Counselor... sorry, Deputy Mayor Snell, and then Counselor Timms.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your presentation. I'm excited about it as well. I've been, like Counselor White, I've been to a lot of them with my daughter. Have you considered that little inlet at the end of Nancy Island?
So that...
That's like a perfect little sweet spot and keeps you away from the boaters as well.
So I've budgeted up to $20,000 for rent for whoever I can, you know, that would be willing to jump into it. And that would be my ideal location, and especially because there's no throughway there, that would be absolutely perfect. And I don't... I don't... with the way that things are going as far as transactions go, I don't see us accepting very much cash, which is one of the... I know that that's a bylaw that's not allowed to, you know... I know on the beach that you're not allowed to accept cash directly, which we can use with square reader with our phones and things like that. So I've taken that into consideration. And that actually, Deputy Mayor, would be my primary location, which I was going to see what the avenues would be to try to get that locked down. If not, I've got backup places, because I know time is of the essence, because the product is being manufactured overseas, and I have to jump on it and get it done quickly, or it won't be able to happen for the summer. And that's been my problem before. I've left it a little too late.
All right, thank you. Counselor Timms?
Thank you, Marcus. Great presentation. Thank you, Your Worship. Certainly fits council's priorities of putting fun back in the beach and bringing in tourism. I had every intention of taking my granddaughter to Barry and didn't get there. I just looked at the pictures again. It's a wonderful opportunity to bring some excitement to the beach. My question is, what age group really does this obstacle course appeal to or is safe for?
Well, we've seen, and I've been to the one in Barry myself too with my children. I have a four-year-old daughter and a 10-year-old son. They're backed up, I mean, for three weeks. And I think that as long as... I would say that if they wanted to go on themselves, what I was thinking is around five years old, because of, like I said, I plan on with every five customers having an employee that will be watching them. I like to go overboard with the safety. I think that it helps me with the longevity of owning the jet skis. I think that if you don't pay attention mostly to safety, then you're not going to be around very long with any business. So in that regard, yes, the dimensions I took into consideration. But I think that anything under five, I'd want them to be accompanied by a parent, which is fine. That would be of no charge, that they could go with them and accompany them. Basically, I'm going to... there'll be some growing pains and things like that. And I have visited a couple other spots and seen what they've done and seen what I've liked and seen what I haven't liked. And I plan on doing everything above and beyond as far as being safely, but I would say anywhere from five to 100.
Thank you. I really appreciate your assurance around the risk management piece. I think that we're all excited about this kind of opportunity coming to the beach, but that's always the big concern. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and with my... just again, to get with the background, is I... with my captain's license and spending... I actually used to be the proctor for the boat licensing. So safety is at the top of my list, especially with having young kids. The last thing I want is for anyone to not be safe out there. And I think that I know exactly what to do to make sure that everyone will be safe.
All right, thank you, Marcus. I have a couple of comments. Again, wonderful idea. And I know that you're here today to get a feel of what council's thinking and where we're going. I think that's pretty clear that this council is supportive of it. However, we're going to need some more information before we can give you a decision. And so I would assume, Madam Clerk, we should have a resolution then to refer this to staff. And we'll have staff reach out to you, Tootsuite. That will be able to give you a list of what it is we require from the MVCA or... I don't think the MVCA. I think it'll be the MECP and whatever the town's going to require with respect to insurance, so on and so forth. The sooner you can get that back to us, Marcus, in a timely manner, the sooner it can come back to council to give you some kind of decision. And I would make sure you include in that your locations, your primary that you'd like
Yep.
and any others along the water. Because if it's not a commercial property, we could have issues with bylaw around that as well, right?
Well, I... not to interrupt, Your Worship, I'm sorry for that, but I've taken that into consideration on the locations that I've already approached. They're all commercially zoned. Also, I've had conversations with the MVCA, which they had no problem with it because it's not motorized and there's no environmental footprint. They seemed... they basically told me, "Go for it." But I can get that in... I'll get that in writing for you. The TSSA, actually, I'm very close with the people that run 365 Sports, and I think you guys have dealt with them maybe in your last term when they had the big event down here. It actually hasn't sanctioned. So again, they said, "We have nothing to do..." So, again, they said, we have nothing to do with it, go for it. So, I don't, I can get that, I can try to get that in writing for you, I just, they basically were like, it has nothing to do with us, as far as we're concerned, go ahead. So, if I could have something more speci, I just need the specifics that you guys will need, and I'll get on that immediately.
So, we'll make sure we get you that information. So, I have a resolution then, that council receive the presentation from Marcus Ludlow for information, and further that, this be referred back to staff for more information. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right, any other questions or comments? Mover, a second, or please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Snell, seconded by Counselor Timms, all in favor, carries unanimously. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you very much for letting me spend some time and getting my idea across to you guys, and congratulations on everyone being elected, and Mr. Bollinger, Counselor Bollinger, being reelected, and that's great, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Thank you, Marcus. Have a great day.
Thanks. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're now moving on to item number six, consent for Committee of the Hall, and I was, normally pass this to Counselor DeLeo, but we have nothing today under Community Services, so I will pass this to Counselor Timms for Public Works.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will now review the Public Works Business Unit of Committee of the Hall. I am not aware of any items that have been pulled from the consent agenda at this time. Would anyone like to make a comment on an item prior to the consent recommendation? Seeing none, I will now move forward to the consent recommendation. Resolve that the Public Works Section of Committee of the Hall hereby receive the February 16th, 2023 Consent List, Item 6.2, and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding addenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately, of which there are none. I have a mover, please. Counselor DeLeo, seconded by Counselor White, all in favor. The motion has passed. This concludes the Public Works Business Unit of the Committee of the Hall, and I will now pass the chair to Counselor Bollinger, Development Services Section.
Thank you, Counselor Timms. I will now review the Development Service Business Unit of Committee of the Hall. I am aware that the following items have been pulled from the consent agenda for separate consideration and vote. Item 6.3.2, item 6.3.4, item 6.3.5, and item 6.3.8. Would anyone like to make any other comment of any other items on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I will now move to the consent agenda resolution. Resolve that the Development Service Section of Committee of the Hall hereby receive the February 16th, 2023 Consent List, Item 6.3, and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately. Could I have a mover and a second? Counselor Eagle and Counselor White. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. I will now move to the first item pulled, which is Item 6.3.2, pulled by Deputy Mayor Snell, due to the previous declaration of precurricular interest, so I don't believe there is comment, but I'll ask that question. And I will note that Deputy Mayor Snell is going to push back from the table. Is there any comment on this item? Yes, Counselor White?
Thank you, Joe. You know, my only concern was that I had a question from this last time with regards to if there's any unit sales for this tree cutting application with the developer. Other than that, I didn't have any other questions about this one.
Does our CAO wanna make comment?
Through you, Your Worship, we're just trying to find our Director of Planning, I think he's just stepped out momentarily.
Do we wanna take a short, five-minute recess?
If you'd like, Counselor Bollinger, we can move to the next item and come back to that item.
Okay, then I think we will do that, then. I will now move to the second item pulled, which is Item 6.3.4, pulled by myself. And I'll just get to my comments here. Well, this is good, I'll cover this, because it's, I had previously had a conversation with our Director of Planning, and he can speak to both 6.3.2 and 6.3.4. So, my concern, not really the tree cutting, but the same development by Fernbrook, was the fact that they had originally, in the original presentation, looked to expand the building coverage, lot coverage, from 45% to 50%. And I wanted our Director of Planning just to validate that this is not a precedent of what's been previously addressed by council. I believe that we still, our bylaws still reflect 35% coverage, but for many municipalities, that's somewhat outdated. So, at this point, I'll turn to the clerk. Should we finish off with the item I'm on, or move back to the first item?
If you wanted to complete the item, I know you've just given a brief introduction on it there, so maybe we'll finish with this item and go back to the previous one.
Okay. So, I'll turn this over to the, our Director of Planning.
Thank you, good morning, council and Your Worship. The 35% coverage is a standard in the current zoning bylaw, which dates back to 2003, and we have had, over the past decade or so, a lot of requests for increased coverage on lots. It's really a ratio issue. We, in 2003, we had a lot of lots in town that were 100 feet by 100 feet in area, and 35% coverage meant that it was completely feasible to get a good-sized building footprint, and a back deck, and two accessory structures in the backyard, and never use up the 35% coverage. But over time, the lots are becoming smaller, there's a lot of factors behind that, cost of land, and so on and so forth. So, the 35% coverage doesn't really equate to the coverage that's actually being put on the site. What we found is that when the builders construct on these smaller lots, they actually build the main building to a footprint of 35%. And then when the landowners come along, and they wanna put a shed in the rear yard, they find they have to get a committee of adjustment, which we recognize is onerous. So, there is a trend to increase the coverage on these smaller lots. We haven't caught up with our zoning bylaw to actually address that trend, so as developers come along, they request variances as part of their development proposal. In this instance, the developer actually requested a coverage of 45%, and staff asked them to go back and do a second analysis to include any potential back decks, to include the accessory structures, because we wanted to make sure, whatever coverage we applied to this development, that it didn't impose another requirement on those future landowners to come back and go through this onerous planning process, which could be frustrating and costly. So, the 50% is actually the result of a further analysis. We anticipate that when we create the new zoning bylaw, we will be adjusting that coverage to reflect modern values, and as we learned today through impact, which I found very interesting, the trend to larger home footprints and home GFAs going on the market these days. So, hopefully, that provides the explanation and satisfies Counselor Bollinger's comment and concern.
Thank you, Director of Planning, Doug Karen, but could you also, just for the public, you had indicated to me a couple of developments that had been at the 50 and 55% previously, because, you know, for, as I mentioned, every time a development comes to council, we just want to be aware if we're setting a new precedent as to lot coverage. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bollinger, and through your worship. One thing we've found is that the measure of increase in percentage of lot area varies from project to project, and really, that's a factor of what they're proposing to put on the market. We have had instances where we've approved greater than 50%. In fact, in the New England Village Project, along Village Gate Drive, we've approved coverages of 55%. So, there is a variety of coverages that we've applied across the town. It changes depending on whether it's a single detached, or whether it's a townhouse, which are also factors, but the 50% is certainly not the highest coverage that we've applied. We've done higher than that, to accommodate the product being put on the market. I would add that when we do this, we always measure what the impact is to the livability of the site, and we want to make sure that the site will still operate where you could get drain, proper drainage in their side yards, where you can get proper access to the rear yard. You wanna make sure that the firefighters running down in the middle of the night are not, they've got enough room to get their equipment down the side of the house. We wanna make sure that there's a sizable amenity yard in the rear yard, and that there's a minimum 20-foot frontage to park a car in the front yard. So, there are some variables that we look at in every single instance, when we are gauging for the lot size that's being proposed by the developers.
Thank you. Is there any further comment on this item? Sorry, Your Worship?
Thank you, Counselor. I think before I comment, we should maybe point out that for this item, Deputy Mayor Snell has come back to the table, and will push away when we go back again. I think we should make sure that's clear for the record, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Doug. So, Doug, I'm speaking now for the purposes and the information of the public, because what I've watched over the last several years is that on almost every development we do in Wasaga Beach, we end up with the developer coming and asking for these extras, if you will, that the general public would feel is an extra, in that the town of Wasaga Beach is caving, if you will, to developers. And that just isn't the case. The end of the day, the hard and cold facts are, is that the town of Wasaga Beach is behind with respect to our planning and our bylaws, and there's good reason for that. I've said it before, I'll say it again, the staff here in many departments, but certainly in planning, we've seen, especially over the last few years, are overtaxed, greatly overtaxed, and so, we can't expect them to keep up with the day-to-day operations of the municipality, and also do all of these extras that need to be done, and it's things that the general public and most people are just not aware of, but they're important. And so, I just wanna be clear that this developer in this case is not asking for anything more than they would in most other, if not all other municipalities or cities, and it's a matter of us catching up, and maybe if I could ask our CAO and our Director of Planning just to touch on that a little deeper, because it's important for the public to understand. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to add a couple points. The current zoning bylaw was approved quite a while ago, I think the Director mentioned 2006. Provincial planning legislation has changed significantly since 2006. Places to Grow Provincial Policy Statement required municipalities to intensify, increase densities, et cetera. So, the provincial regime that was in place when that zoning bylaw was initially created, very different. The numbers that the Director of Planning is quoting are very in tune with norms and best practices across the province. Most municipalities have a minimum of 40% coverage, some are higher than that in their zoning bylaws, so I think what this is suggesting is that the update to our zoning bylaw is desperately needed, because our regulations are out of touch with market and provincial legislation, and I know that is currently being undertaken by the Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll go to our Director of Planning, and then I see you there, Counselor Eagle.
Further to that, Your Worship, the, in next month, planning staff will bring forward an information report to council and to the public, explaining the status of the official plan update, the West End Secondary Plan Update, which is some component of the official plan, and also the new zoning bylaw. We hope to have them at a place where they could be ready for approval early in the new year, 2024. There has been a delay for multiple, multiple reasons. We expected to have a new official plan, quite frankly, back in 2015, but we couldn't do it because we had to wait for the county to get their official plan up to date, which took almost four years, and then other things, factors came in, COVID, lack of staff, other things, so, but we are on track now, and we hope to have these documents modernized to reflect the common standards that we see elsewhere in the province, and standards that are suitable to the town of Wasaga Beach as well.
Thank you, and Counselor Eagle was first, if I-
I just had a supplemental, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, and I'm assuming that this report is going to bring us to a standard that is going to allow then, not only for the developer, but for the future homeowners of these homes, the ability to add decks, add sheds, without having to come back to the town. Developers do this for a living, homeowners do not, and it is quite cumbersome for individual homeowners to come forward, where if we, if we expand that to a number that allows that, I think that's very important.
Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Eagle?
Thank you, and through the chair. This is not a question on the lot sizes, or the percentage covered, but I'm just looking at, as we develop new areas, we're very light on sidewalks in Wasaga. Are sidewalks planned, or one side of this area for sidewalks?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, sidewalks are, we do have a policy for the installation of sidewalks. We require sidewalks on at least one side of the street for every development that gets built. There is a standardization of where the sidewalks would go, and it depends on the orientation, but we, I believe it's built into the engineering design guidelines, and this has been something that's been in place since the mid 2000s, give or take.
Thank you.
Is there, oh, yes, Deputy Mayor Snell?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm just thinking about Wasaga Beach, we've had, you know, lots of conversation about this, and we heard, I've heard from residents, you know, that really love our tree canopy, that love the larger yards, and, you know, the more open spaces, and the concern of, you know, aggressive growth, and smaller footprints, and compaction. Is there any thought in the official community plan in regards to the established communities? You know, the established neighborhoods with the larger yards, and what gets considered to be approved in new developments that are adjacent to those areas? If that makes sense, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, there's actually two aspects to that question, established neighborhoods, and then the new development that are coming along. So, it's not uncommon, and this is the case with this application that's before us today, the developer is looking to clearcut lands that are fully forested in order to establish a brand-new plan of subdivision. The town has, for as long as I've been here, and I started in 2003, had a policy where with every brand-new lot, we require two trees to be planted in the rear yard, and one tree to be planted in the front yard. Once those, it takes a few years, but once those trees grow to a certain level of maturity, what we see is a developed area where you still have a fairly full tree canopy, and if you were to take the time and look at Google Maps, and you look down at the town of Wasaga Beach, for a municipality that has more population than Midland-Pennetang, and as of recent, Collingwood, it looks incredibly forested on Google Maps, whereas other municipalities, which are more traditional and make up, you can see the concrete from 30,000 feet. So, the policy has been successful. When it comes to the established neighborhoods, what we see is that the current legislation, which allows- which allows as of right, second units and garden suites in the rear yard, could pose a threat to the canopies, the tree canopy cover in those established neighborhoods. However, at this point, we haven't done a full analysis, but we don't expect it to be fully detrimental. It will really depend on the take-up of the market of how many of those units actually, where we actually see granny suites. And the approach that we're taking is to create the downtown nodes to enhance choice of types of housing. So in those downtown nodes, create the apartments, create different styles of apartments, sizes of apartments, different medium-density products so that we create rentable housing. But, you know, it doesn't drive a sector where we need the garden suites. We think some will happen. We also think anecdotally that as we increase our employment sector, there will be more demand for varied types of housing. That could drive the demand for garden suites, but it may not occur for some time. In the meantime, as we update our official plan, planning staff are very cognizant that we want to install climate change policies into that official plan, which would reflect how are we going to retain that tree canopy. So that's something we're working on and will be working on in the next year while we create the new official plan, some tree protection policies that go above and beyond the current tree-cutting bylaw that we have.
Okay, if no supplementary, then I'll go to Counselor Delio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, this question is for you. Doug? This question's for you. I have a Fernburg home. It was built in 2007. So the policy you were saying about the sidewalks, I've got no sidewalks. None of our area has sidewalks. So if they applied prior and they built in 2000?
Excuse me, this is not related to the agenda item.
Sorry.
So I would, if you could take that offline with our Director of Planning.
I'll talk to you later.
Thank you. Is there any further comment or questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll read the motion. The Joint Committee of the Hall and Council approved the application for zoning bylaw amendment Z-05/21, inclusive of modifications recommended by town planning staff in this report dated February 16, 2023, and that all written submissions received in regard to the application and all oral submissions made at the Statutory Public Committee held on September 9, 2021 relating to the application have been taken into consideration as part of these deliberations. And final decision related to the approval of the application for zoning bylaw amendment Z-05/21 and pursuant to the Planning Act, the following statements shall be included in the notice of decision. Regard has been had for all written and oral submissions received before the decision was made in relation to this, these planning matters as considered in the Report of Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment Z-05/21 presented to Joint Committee of the Hall and Council on February 16, 2023. Can I have a mover and seconder? Okay, we have Counselor Delio and Deputy Mayor Schnell. And all those in favor? Carried unanimously.
This, the report that's before committee responds to the queries and questions that came up through the delegation from Mr. Villa. The background to the justification behind this is, really reflects that the developer can't go ahead until they actually do an enhanced level of study, geoengineering study, and requires more boreholes. To do that work, they have to cut the trees. Our current development approvals process says you can't cut the trees until you get a planning approval, but we're not going to give them a planning approval until they do the boreholes. It's a real catch-22 for the developer. The typical situation would be that we would only allow them to cut the trees when we know that they're just about to go forward with development works. In this case, because we're using the tree-cutting bylaw as the approval tool rather than planning approvals as the approval tool, and in the absence of planning approvals, we're recommending a condition that if the developer hasn't, you know, removes the trees, and they're only allowed to remove the trees, they can't remove the stumps because if they dig out the stumps, that's altering the grade and altering the site, which is not permitted. So all they can do is remove the trees so that they can get machinery in there to do the boreholes. But if they don't advance with development over the next year, we are requiring that they replant those trees. So they've given us somewhat, I guess you could call it a forest management plan, that they would go in, for whatever reason the market crashes or something happens, which we really don't expect to happen, we will have that, those lands reforested.
Thank you. And is there any further comments or questions? I'll go to your worship and then to Counselor Eagle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So although I am supportive of development and working with developers, I mean, at the end of the day, it's legislated upon us as a municipality by the province to do so. And whether we like the growth that's coming, it's coming, and we can't stop it because it is, I mean, Places to Grow legislates that upon us. So, but I am somewhat concerned. I want to help the developer here in this case, but I'm concerned if the bore, the results of the boreholes are not what are supportive of this development that although we're saying they have to replant it, I mean, trees take many, many years to grow. So is there any way, Doug, that they can bore these holes in areas? I'm sure they know where they need to do this and clear less as opposed to clear cut so as that they can get equipment to specific places? I think all of council, I know I have for sure have received a few emails from residents. All of those emails, save and except one who wants absolutely no development whatsoever, are not opposed to the development, but they're opposed to clearcutting without approvals in place for that development. In other words, they don't want these trees gone and then, you know, waiting years for them to grow back if no development is going to be there. And I think that's a reasonable expectation and ask of the residents. So is there, is there any way that we can work around this, that developers can clear pathways, if you will, or whatever into this area, cut the trees that are needed to be cut reasonably to drill these holes so as that we know they're going to go forward? And if they don't, yeah, we've lost some trees, but certainly haven't clearcut it.
Thank you, your worship. I'm actually satisfied with the approach, and I've asked that very same question that you ask of our engineering team. And because in my experience, the machines that do the boreholes, they're about eight feet wide, and typically in any other development, they can squirrel through the trees, do the boreholes, and get out with minimal damage to the forest cover. Sometimes they have to take some trees down, but it's not always all that noticeable. Sometimes you can see transects where they've had to cut their way through to get to the borehole areas, and they do their work. But again, it doesn't require full removal of the trees. So I had this very same discussion with the manager of Engineering Services, who took the time to explain to me that in this case, while there is some certainty that the retaining walls can be built because of the steep slopes, the engineers hired by the town to do the peer review are asking for these extra boreholes just to be absolutely certain of it. And the way the Engineering Services Manager explained it to me is that because they have to do boreholes on both sides, there are so many slopes, downslopes and upslopes on either side, that by the time they clear enough trees to get the boreholes done, there's such a thin sliver of trees left in the middle of where the streets would be in these proposed subdivision that we may also take them down to in one action. So I'm satisfied from my position, having seen these situations before in the past, that the town is doing everything it can to try to mitigate it. In this one instance, the mitigation, if we don't allow them to take the trees down the way they want to, to do the studies that the town is asking them to do, it's going to negate the approval of this development. And it wouldn't be to the developer's fault, it would be to the town's fault. So that's really the issue that we're in. And in using the tree bylaw as opposed to a planning application or planning and development approval, at least with the tree bylaw, we can put a condition in that replanting does occur. And yes, it would leave a scar upon the landscape for some time to come, but I originally, before my planning career, I was a forest technologist and I graduated from Lakehead. And I've done quite a few of these replanting schemes in my previous career and some here. And I'm satisfied that the replanting program that the developer has come up with is suitable to the situation. They're choosing trees to replant that are naturalized to the area, so the type of trees they're taking down are exactly the type of trees that they would be putting in. The spacing of the trees, they haven't, for lack of a better word, cheaped out. They're actually putting in a good density that would replicate probably more stems in the area than currently are there but in mature form. So, which is a good thing because if, once they plant, there's always an issue of mortality from some of the new trees going in. But with the density they're proposing, you're still going to get a good tree cover if we have to rely on that.
A supplementary, your worship?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in that case, and I understand the issue we're up against here. So in that case, is, are we able to at least require that if replanting is required, that they start with trees that are of a decent size so as that they're going to see some greenery quickly as opposed to a sapling that is, you know, going to take 10, 20 years?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, and to your worship, we could require that larger-sized trees be installed. It doesn't absolutely guarantee their survival over time for that extra cost and extra leafage. Sometimes when you plant a smaller seedling, it adapts better and the roots adapt better because they're, you know, they grow in situ in the naturalized soil. I would suggest that, again, the proposal that they've put forward, they're using naturalized trees, the size of the trees, for instance, the white pine that they're proposing to replant, they're not seedlings. They are actually in a bucket-sized tree. We could ask that to ensure their survival, we adjust the work plan, that they go in and trim the grasses around those trees, much like they do in a Christmas tree farm. So in the first three years of growth, you want to make sure that the trees are able to get above the grass, and it's all about competing for sunlight. So that could be something that we add to the tree planting work plan, and that would allow the trees better survivability, but also, you know, an enhanced environment for growth in those first three critical years of growth.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Eagle?
Thank you. I appreciate this conversation. So on the other end of it, removing the trees, it's the timing. I know that was discussed at the previous meeting and like others, I've received emails here. So how long will it take to clear these trees away?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The intent would to be to have the trees cleared before the April 1 deadline when the federal nesting season legislation comes into play. So I don't have a dedicated answer to the question in terms of would it take one week or three weeks? My guesstimate would be they would use the entire window up until April 1, so, which is basically a month and a half from now.
Yes, that's exactly what I was thinking. So if it's three weeks, you really have to start early March?
Yes, there would be, there would be a time for them to stage their equipment onto the site and, you know, a period for removal. There are four blocks, whether they move from one block to another, to another block. I would suggest that it wouldn't be unreasonable to take the full month to get all of the trees down. It depends on how many, how much forces they mobilize.
So do you think it's doable?
Oh, yes.
Counselor White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just circling back to the first question that you missed when you weren't here. In the original presentation, I had asked, because part of the reason that they wanted to get this done now is because they're going to start, you know, essentially developing the site in 2023 according to the report. And I'd asked if they had even started any sales of any units or if they had some feedback on the sales of units. I just didn't see that answer in the report.
Oh, thank you. I apologize for that. Through you, Mr. Chair, I actually do not have the answer to that question. We do have the planner, Samantha, who is here, but I'm not sure that we have an answer or whether we've even discussed that. But we can certainly ask the question and circle back and bring that information to a general email to council if that's acceptable.
Yeah, the reason for the question is just to look at the viable, like the short-term, you know, viability of the project. If they are actually planning on developing within the calendar 2023, then they would, you know, have something to back that up with, some unit sales or at least a sales strategy of understanding of, you know, when these are going to be on the market, or else there's no point in taking down all the tree, you know what I mean? See what I'm saying? Is this, if their whole proposal was to develop in the summer, they must have sold something.
In the absence of having an answer to that question of whether they've sold units, I can advise you that the proponent for this project has been on the calls, the coordination calls that we've had with engineering and planning, and has been actively involved and has shown a true dedication to this project, not a standoffish approach. If there's any indicator that, and the type of concerns that that individual has shared with us are the type of concerns that we would normally see from a project that is to be advanced. Nonetheless, though, we will ask the question about whether sales are on it and circle back.
Is there any further comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll read the motion. That the Joint Committee of the Hall and Council receive the, for information, the report authorizing staff to issue a permit to injure or destroy trees to Sunny View Estates Construction, Inc., for lands described as FLOS, F-L-O-S, CONs, Concession 8, I guess, NPT Lot 25 RP 51R 38 11 2 Part 1, and FLOS, C-O-N, Concession 8, I believe, North, Part Lot PT LOT 25 RP 51R 22 8 36. Part Lot, P-T L-O-T, 25 RP 51R 22 8 36, Part 2, P-T Part 1, FLOS, Concession 8 E, P-T Lot 25 RP 51R 187 82, P-T Part 6, and FLOS, Concession or C-O-N, 8 E, P-T Lot 25 RP 51R 187 82, P-T Part 6, Subject to the owner fulfilling the conditions outlined within the staff report dated February 16th, 2023. Could I have a mover and a seconder?
Sorry, could you read that again?
I think we record the meeting. Can we bring that up? Moved by Counselor Delio and seconder? Am I allowed to second?
You can second it to put on the table, yes.
I will second the motion. All those in favor? That's carried by a vote of four, it would appear, with our deputy mayor back from the table and in opposition, Mayor Smith and Counselor Eagle. And I will invite our deputy mayor back to the table. And we will now move to item 6.3.5. And that was pulled by myself. And I would, in reviewing the building report for January, I see that there was some significant reductions over prior year. And I'd ask our Director of Building to speak to that if he would and how that might impact development charges or what forecast development charges for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Belonge. I assume you're referring to the number of permits and dwelling units issued compared to last year, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, as we've spoke through the budget process, you know, we are seeing a little bit of downturn in our numbers this year. And we expect that this year will be a softer year than what we've seen the last couple of years. You know, important also to point out that what we saw the last couple of years certainly was far from the norm. So I was actually, you know, although our numbers are down, typically the numbers that you would see in January and February would be permits that we received in bulk submissions in November and December of the previous year. And often that's driven by people trying to beat DC increases and that kind of thing. So obviously, the fact that we didn't see those types of bulk submissions coming in late last year, I really think, you know, enforces our opinion that this year is going to be a little bit slower because they weren't racing to beat the DC increases. So, you know, I think that speaks to the fact that it is going to be a soft year. I actually thought when you pulled this report, Counselor Belonge, that it might be to highlight that our CityView portal is now live and we're actually processing applications through our online portal. So that's a real good news story for us. It's up and running. We encourage anybody that hasn't tried to use it, that if you're considering applying for a permit, please go to the town website. Just go in the search bar and punch in CityView Building Portal and the links will take you there and you'll be able to create your online account and access our services online. Back to your original question. You know, it's fairly easy conclusion to draw that as we see our building permit numbers decline in terms of new starts, that we're also going to see that affect the number of development charges that we collect this year. So, you know, we're predicting somewhere between 150 and 200 new units this year. You know, there's always surprises. We got a call a couple of weeks ago, somebody talking about bringing in 85 applications that we didn't see coming this year. So, you know, it's one of those things, it's a crystal ball exercise at best. We do our best to try and predict what we think is coming. But right now, we figure 150 to 200.
Thank you, and thank you for the information on the portal. When we allow you to speak about your report, it's not restrictive in any way, so that's perfect. Is there further comments or, Your Worship?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have to commend our chief building official. That has got to be the smoothest way to get something out that I have ever seen done in my life. So congratulations, Mr. Chief Building Official. And I just thought it was important to mention that I've had conversations, myself and staff, with a few different developers. And the first question I always ask is, you know, what are you expecting for 2023, 2024? And the answer is unanimous that these are more of catch-up years for developers in our area, if not throughout the province, and that they still tend, they will still have a ton of activity because they're so far behind in getting these buildings built out that they've sold. We'll see a lot of action, but new permits will be less. But I think it's a great news story that although a year where many municipalities will see zero growth or very little, Wasaga Beach is still going to have 150, possibly 200 or 285. So it's a great news story for our community. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll read the motion. That the Development Service Sections of Joint Committee of the Hall and Council receive the staff report, Building Department Activity Summary, January 2023, for information. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Your Worship and Counselor Tims? And all those in favor? That's carried unanimously. I'll now go to the last item being pulled. And that is item 6.3.8, pulled by Deputy Mayor Schnell. And I'll pass the floor to our deputy mayor.
Thank you, Chair Belonge. I pulled this piece just more for comment around the socioeconomic profile report. What a dynamic document. I think that's going to be really, really helpful in a lot of the planning, not only for, you know, attracting different investors, but also too for our own community planning. One thing that really stood out for me was at the bottom of page two in regards to the fastest growing industries by percentage. It was noted, motion picture, video productions. And then at the top of page three, it identified potential industries to attract very similar motion pictures, interactive digital media. And so that got me to thinking about our beautiful new library and arena. And, you know, just to sort of put it out there, I think it's really important to, when we're making decisions about the investments in the library in terms of programming, that this piece should be addressed or at least recognized in that space there. Because I think there's, we know that there's an industry and there's a demand of creative economy and cultural development in our community. And I think that would be a great asset for our community. So that's one thing I plan to continue a conversation on with our CAO of the library. But if you wanted to speak to that report at all, Mr. Hearn?
Go ahead, Director of Planning.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. There's a couple of other really critical aspects that we've learned through this report. And one of them is that the age groups, ages 15 through 29 and 30 through 44 are the fastest expanding age groups in Wasaga Beach. And the report indicates that, you know, Wasaga Beach has always been known as a retirement community, but now we're becoming a full-fledged, more balanced community, which is incredibly important to us. Because as we move forward, we look to bring people to Wasaga Beach who are investors, who are creative, who will flourish our economic economy that way. And it's this particular age group, along with some of the more recently retired, who are bringing forward some of their ideas that they've cultured all their careers. So I think we are at the stepping stone of being the full-on Wasaga Beach that we've always known that we are going to be. And I think it's, having this report in front of us tells us in black and white that yes, we're on the right track.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Supplementary. You bring up an excellent point because I think having this clear data, not assumed data or projected data, but real, live data, that we can then share with some of our community partners, like the Simcoe County District School Board and the Catholic School Board in regards to, you know, the business case of a high school in Wasaga Beach. So I can see so much value coming from this report, really crossing all departments. So thank you for the work in bringing it forward.
Counselor Tims?
Thank you. Some of my comments have already been brought forward, but I just wanted to add that, and excuse me. I think this report is fantastic. It really reinforces our priority plan and offers some opportunities to look right into our most recent strategic plan and put some real tasks at play here. I also am excited in the shift of the demographic. I think that's wonderful and that's going to work very well with us as we move forward with our, building up our economy again. So, great timing.
Your Worship?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just comment on this as well in that it is a great report, it's an excellent report. And it does fit right in, I think, where we're at today to the director's point, to tell us what we've always known. And so I think it's important, as my colleagues here have mentioned, very important, for example, when we speak to education in our community and when we speak to a high school. We've always known that the business case is there. The business case was given to us by the province back in my last term as mayor. And that business case hasn't changed, except it's strengthened. And so it's going to help us there. But we mustn't forget, obviously, that although we're moving to a younger demographic, which is just the cycle of life and it is what it is, that we are still going to have more than our fair share of seniors in our community and that it's important that we are looking after them as well. And I think what's important to point out is that, you know, I hear this from members of the public all the time and especially if people aren't happy. You know, we don't want tourism, we don't want this traffic. We don't want more houses built, we don't want mid-rise, high-rise. These are things that are beyond our control. These are things that are happening across North America. These are often, this growth is legislated upon us in most cases. And so, you know, be rest assured, I don't think you're going to have any council sit here and tell you, yes, we want to be the city of Brampton or the city of Mississauga or Toronto. But although we're never going to be a city, we are a growing community. We've been in the top 10 for as long as I can remember. We've been number one in some cases. You know, we're right at the top here again. But what's important is that although we're not working towards being a big city, we are seeing big city problems in our communities now and here in Wasaga Beach. We have challenges that we haven't seen in the past that have come upon us in the last few years and again this year. And so homelessness being one of those. You know, it's only been the last year or two that we've seen homeless folks, the most vulnerable people in our society here in Wasaga Beach. And we have a responsibility to look after those problems and the big city problems that are here regardless. And why are they here? Not because of our growth rate, but because of our proximity, I think, to the big city. We're within an hour and a half of the GTA of Toronto. And so those problems are going to seep into our communities, whether we want them or not, and our responsibility is to build with them. So it's a great, a great report. It's, as the deputy mayor said, great, true data, you know, living, breathing data. And I'm happy it's here because I think this council, along with staff, are going to be able to implement changes and effect that are going to help us move forward in a more positive, sustainable way in the future. So thank you very much for it, Doug.
Any more comments or questions? Excuse me, I just, I would just like to add that the changing demographic, and I know our economic development coordinator and Doug are working on this, but it also creates some opportunities and some desires of our population related to business and activity. We saw a good example with, you know, the floating gymnasium on the river. But there's many other opportunities that I think we can't sit back and wait for someone to bring the idea to us. I think there's a lot of sort of trade shows and different avenues that we could follow and try to encourage that new business and new activity into our community based on this changing demographic. And I think we're seeing this with the phenomena of working at home. We're seeing this migration of people that see the benefit of the lifestyle we offer, the natural assets that we offer. But right now, oftentimes, those activities are existing in neighbor municipalities and not within Wasaga Beach. So I hope that not only we will be a full community related to the demographic, but also in the products, services, and activities that we offer our community. Thank you. I will read the motion, thank you. That the Development Service Section of Joint Committee of the Hall receive the Wasaga Beach Socioeconomic Profile dated February 16th, 2023, for information. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Deputy Mayor Schnell and Counselor Eagle, all those in favor? That's carried unanimously. And Development Service Section. And I will turn it over to Deputy Mayor Schnell for General Government Section. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Belonge. Now reviewing the General Government Business Unit of the Committee of the Hall. I'm aware that the following items have been pulled from the consent agenda for separate consideration and vote. That's 6.4.4 and 6.4.5. Would anyone like to make a comment on an item prior to the consent recommendation? Seeing none, I'll also mention that 6.4.2 has been pulled by Counselor Belonge in regards to a pecuniary conflict. So I'll read the motion now. Resolve that the government, General Government Section of Committee of the Hall hereby receive the February 16th, 2023 Consent List, Item 6.4, and that all recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor White and Counselor Belonge, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So pulling now item number 6.4.4. Sorry, 6.4.2? Okay, so that Joe's able to step back? Okay, sorry. So we'll start with 6.4.2 where Counselor Belonge will have to step back.
So for clarification, I did not vote on two of the grants because of the conflict, but I did vote on all others. So do I step back for the entire?
Corrected, because they're included as part of the overall. Okay, given that this item is pulled, does anybody have any comments or questions in regards to, yeah, Counselor Delio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know who can answer this question or not, but on the grants, it's weighing heavily on me. I just want to clarify. I'm noticing that we're donating to Almville Curling Club, the Stainer Granite Club, and to the Stainer Lawn Bowling Club. Do any of those towns donate to Wasaga Beach? That's part one. And then the second question is, how many of our residents actually use these facilities to justify us donating to them? Thank you.
Thank you, and I see our senior account analyst. And I see our senior account analyst is here, so if you could please address the question. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Through the Chair, to the Counselor. So the Stainer Curling Club and the Elmville Curling Club and the Stainer Lawn Bowling Club. So I don't have figures for how many members are from Wasaga Beach. I know that it was a high proportion last I had heard in one of their reports, but I don't have a number to provide for you today, but I can, I can message the groups to, to find out what that ratio is. And I don't, I don't, I don't, can't speak for certain whether or not Springwater or Clearview donates to any Wasaga Beach ventures.
Thank you. Supplementary? No? Thank you. It sounds like we would, we would appreciate, whoops, sorry, getting that information. Go ahead, Counselor Tim.
Thank you. I, I would just like to comment through you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. I, as a new counselor, I had a difficult time with the grant applications and it could be because I don't know all of the organizations. So I was in studying if I could find some background on some. I struggled with that. Some had no background, some had no financials provided. One organization with none of the above was, was requested by only one individual. I was wondering if some thought or could be given to creating an application that required more information to be shared and that maybe there's an opportunity to create a separate application for events as per, as opposed to organization because it was a little bit confusing and I think one organization was asking for two grants, which could have been missed by other members of council. So a comment and a suggestion only. Thank you.
No reply? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Ego.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just as a comment to Counselor DeLeo, I recall in my reading, because I used to be a cooler, that Elmville does donate time to the students of Wasaga Beach for free ice. So if that's a help in any way, that was definitely state of my mind that free ice was given to our students. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I guess to that question, I think what's important to note is that we do have a lot of members, citizens here in Wasaga Beach that attend both Elmville and Stainer Granite Clubs as well as the lawn bowling. And I can understand how the counselor can struggle a bit with it because we're giving money to another community, if you will. But, but I look at it this way. We could give a few dollars each year to those organizations that many of our citizens have the ability to enjoy, or we could build our own curling rink or our own lawn bowling facility. And I, I think, you know, when I look at it from that standpoint, it makes the decision quite easy. And I can tell you that all three of these clubs have worked well, I think, with our citizens and the town on any occasion that we've reached out in order to, to facilitate and do whatever. And so I'm just happy that we have the ability or those facilities for our residents to use and, you know, I, I think it's a worthwhile cause, but I understand completely how the counselor could have concern not knowing that coming new. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor DeLeo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That clarifies it. For me, as long as our residences are also using it and getting enjoyment, that satisfies me. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further questions or comments? That the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council approved the grants listed under average grant award column from Appendix A to this report under the annual municipal grants program. Can I have a mover in a second, please? Counselor DeLeo and Counselor Ego? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously with Counselor Belange stepping back from the vote. Moving on to item six, whoops, sorry, 6.4.4, Chief Administration Administrative Officers' Report dated February 16th, 2023, Regarding the Recommendation Report of 2023 to 2026 Term of Council Priorities. This item was pulled by Mayor Smith and also by myself and the CAO would also like to speak. Would you like to speak first, Andrew?
I'm, I'm happy to. Okay. Thank, thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of council. It's a, a pleasure to be in front of you today, to be presenting you with your priorities. And these have certainly come as a result of meeting with all members of council and holding a council workshop fairly recently over in the Fire Hall where we had an opportunity to review all of the contents of, of the term of council priorities. At the core of this, there are many things that Wasaga Beach is doing extremely well. We want to keep doing those things. There are some areas where we do need to improve and that is really the focus of, of these terms of council priorities. And we've grouped all of the actions contained within under five strategic pillars of change and those are the areas where we want to focus and improve so that we can build the truly complete community that the Director was talking about earlier and that all of council was speaking to. The five strategic pillars of change, and I won't go into detail on all the actions, but I'll just briefly explain that the pillars for the benefit of the community that, that may be listening. The first is about building complete communities. That is actually required by the provincial government under the, the growth plan and provincial policy statement and it's a good thing to do. We want our residents to be able to undertake their daily needs within close proximity of home so that they're, they're not forced to travel a long distance to undertake daily needs. Not every community or area within Wasaga Beach is equal, meaning some of the things that one community may have in close proximity, others may not, such as a grocery store or, or other amenities. But what we are trying to do is make them as complete as possible so that wherever you live, hopefully you'll have a, a park within close proximity so that your kids, your grandparents, your, your grandchildren, yourself can, can walk to a, a local park. As a goal, you know, if we can minimize the need to spend a, a liter of gas to buy a liter of milk, that's a good thing. So there will be areas of Wasaga Beach where we will truly try and create completeness and I would suggest that, that that's in our downtown or in the key nodes that the Director mentioned earlier. But as an overall concept, complete living is something that we're trying to do. Inclusivity, the Mayor spoke about the big city issues that are impacting small town Ontario. These are things we can't ignore. So this is the social aspects and ensuring that all of our residents are treated in a way where they're happy, healthy and safe. And we saw this recently, the storm that hit us a couple of weeks ago where we mobilized quickly to ensure that some of our vulnerable residents were safe. So those are things that you just need to do. Opportunities and I love the fact that we were talking earlier about the, the revised demographics in Wasaga Beach and that we're seeing that we're getting younger. We need to pay a lot of attention to that and ensure that the young folks that are going to be growing up in Wasaga Beach have opportunities. The last thing we want is to raise young folks and then have them leave once they get to an age where they're looking for a job or looking for education, post-secondary education. So we want to try and ensure that as part of being complete, we're delivering opportunities for work, creating jobs. We're also at budget time and we're seeing the impact on residents by having a, a tax base that is so heavily skewed towards residential homes. So diversing, defining the economy, creating opportunities for our community paramount to moving forward. A well-run corporation and a lot of this has to do with internal to Wasaga Beach, the town of Wasaga Beach. We want to ensure we're, we're creating a culture of innovation, creativity and that we're delivering the best customer service that we can to our residents because after all, we all work for the residents of this community. So we're, we're looking at advancing on a number of different priorities within that area. And then finally, green. 2023, if you're not talking about green, you've literally had your head in the sand for many, many years. It's paramount that everything we do has a green tinge to it and that we're building a sustainable community for all of our, our future residents. So those are the five strategic pillars that all the actions are grouped within. There are 84 actions and I know that sounds overwhelming, but I, I believe it's actually, it's, it's implementable and achievable. They are grouped in terms of zero to four, four to eight and eight plus years. The majority of these actions are for this term of council. There are some that go beyond this term, such as beachfront revitalization. We need to recognize that there are some things that take a bit longer than four years and we shouldn't shy away from having those as key priority actions. Next steps in terms of moving forward, should council choose to approve this document, we'd like to take it and actually assign accountability. So every one of those 84 actions, there should be an accountable director to delivering those actions. And if, if it's a zero to four action, let's step back, figure out the work plan, is it a year one, two, three, four, and then get moving on them. And as part of that, there will be yearly updates, yearly reports to council to, to track progress. If you're tracking progress and you've got someone who's accountable for delivering an action, things tend to get done. And that's what we want to ensure, that all of these actions here that we're moving forward, if there's something that we come across where there's an issue or we can't advance, we'll come forward and we'll tell you why. But, so that, that's the general approach and we're looking forward to moving forward and there are already things that are well underway. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNeil. I'll ask the Mayor, please, for your comments or questions first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Andrew, for that explanation. I, I pulled this specifically to make sure that Andrew would speak to it. I didn't want it to go through on a consent agenda and not, and the public not hear what they've just had the pleasure of hearing. And I've also pulled it to, to talk to it, to let the public know that, you know, I'm looking out upon a pretty bright group of people here that work for the town of Wasaga Beach. I think we're, we're putting a team together here that is going to be, currently is, has been and will continue to be second to none. And it's, we're seeing a new approach, I think, to how councils complete their priorities. I, I love the fact that we have this five-pillar approach and yes, there's 84 items in here. None all of them are, are life-changing, but several of them are and they will take a little longer. But important that the people of Wasaga Beach understand that this council is on top of things, we're moving forward and we're moving forward aggressively and we've got an absolute amazing staff behind us to make it happen. And just, just to the CAO's point that this might appear a, a little overwhelming to some, I can tell you, Mr. CAO, it's not overwhelming to council in any way, shape or form because we have all the confidence in the world in you to get it done. No pressure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I'll turn it to Counselor White, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, it's just a comment really on the process. As someone who works for significant sized organizations in my day-to-day life and we go through this process of identifying priorities and values often enough, I can say that it was a thoughtful and intelligent process that sees us develop a plan that goes beyond four years, which does create a steady approach to the future of Wasaga Beach and it's something that we have desperately needed for a long time. So I can't thank you enough for your, your process and approach and of course, the rest of council's input to get us to where we are. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor White. Is there anybody else? Counselor Belange?
Thank you, Chair, and I would just suggest that, you know, on a quarterly basis perhaps that we, we have a good part of a, a meeting where we do update council and update the public on, on the, some of the milestones or some of the key steps that, that we're completing. I, I know in my seven years here, sometimes there were important things that, that we didn't get to and, you know, affordable, attainable housing was one that comes to mind, which is extremely important. And I, I think the public really needs to understand that this is a living document, that our, our leadership team will be looking at it, if not daily, at least weekly and, and that we can give the public good news on a quarterly basis.
Go ahead, Andrew.
And through Madam, Madam Chair, I just, I just wanted to point out as well, everyone is seeing a new format corporate report. Within the new corporate reports, there's actually a section where staff will be referencing this priority document and this initiative is in line with action number such and such. So the community should be able to see and track progress as we go, but we can certainly do quarterly updates, yearly updates, whatever council wishes and, and, and we'll be able to share our progress.
Thank you. Are there any other further questions or comments? Okay, I just have one. I see Mr. Bickerstaff in the, in the gallery here today and, you know, one, I, I see it also on our priorities under diversify the economy and create jobs under the tourism, promote tourism section is to look at developing an ambassador program to improve, you know, customer experience here. And this is something Mr. Bickerstaff and, and I, many people I'm sure have chatted about, but one thing that was, was very loudly heard at one of the public events when this item was mentioned specifically around promoting people to take their garbage with them when they come and visit our beautiful beach, had a resounding response from the audience of, of, that I think the, the public is going to be very supportive of this initiative, especially if it can help drive environmental awareness and cleanliness and respect ultimately of our, of our beautiful waterfront beach. So just a comment, but if, if you wanted to comment to that at all or, or not, that's fine.
Through, through Deputy Mayor, I, I agree. That, that's something that when I previously worked here was high on our radar as well. Well, we'll certainly take that away and give some thought around how to create an ambassador program for the beachfront. I, I think it's a, a good thing to be doing, for sure.
Fantastic. Go ahead, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize for raising my hand after you've spoken, but you brought something to my attention with respect to garbage. I, I couldn't agree more that we need to educate our visitors to take their garbage with them. But I think what's very important to point out is that at the end of the day, that garbage is our responsibility as well. And, and I, I look to the CAO because I know that he had some previous experience with a little company in Florida called Disney and I, you know, if you look to Disney, I think they have a garbage can every 28 feet. Every 28 square feet at the parks, there's a garbage receptacle, which is why you don't see garbage all over the place. And they empty those garbage cans regularly. And so when we look to our beautiful beachfront in the summertime, what we learned in my last term of council is when we added more garbage cans and we dumped those garbage cans more often, when people left, the beach was not nearly, in some cases was fairly clean compared to when we didn't. And so we, we need to get back to that to make sure we have enough garbage receptacles and that we are emptying them regularly enough that, because what we, what we learned was people would take their garbage, they'd walk to the garbage can and put it in the can. But when they could see that the can was overflowing, they left the garbage wherever it was. So we can't promote garbage everywhere either. We need to make sure that we're on top of that. And an ambassador program, to your point, Madam Chair, will really help us do that. So thank you very much for allowing me to comment again.
I see Counselor DeLeo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may add to that about the garbage, I had an incident last summer where I was driving on a particular street and there was a bunch of garbage, all food rotting, you name it, it was in there. I picked it up. But I'm noticing that people that are renting homes, Airbnb, they're not, they're not, they're not leaving their garbage there, they're taking it with them, but then they're dumping them out the door in their car because they don't want to smell for the next two or three hours. I, I don't know if there's a bylaw or a policy that if you're renting your home, every home has bins.
Sorry, Counselor DeLeo, again, we're, we're steering off subject. We were just talking about the CAO's report. It's a good point that you're bringing up, but it's just not in accordance with, with the current agenda. Sorry, thank you. Thank you. Are there any other further comments or questions related to this particular matter? Okay, seeing none. That the report titled Recommendation Report 2023 to 2026 Term of Council Priorities to the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting of February 16th, 2023 be received and that the two, that the term of council priorities be used to guide the development of corporate
work programs and inform the budget process. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Councilor DeLeo, Mayor Smith, and all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. We also have next six point four point five, which is the Chief Administration Administrative Officers Report dated February 16, 2023, Regarding the Recommendation Report Development of the Town-Owned Lands in the Downtown, Inclusive of the Beachfront. This item was pulled by Mayor Smith, our CAO, Councilor Belanger, and also myself. We'll start, please, with Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of council. Pleased to be here presenting this report, although I think I probably echo everyone in this community's frustration with redevelopment. And I can share, as someone who's grown up in this town, I am looking back and trying to find a time in my life where somebody wasn't talking about trying to get the beachfront redeveloped, or the downtown redeveloped. So I think it's time that we get on with things. I think we would all agree with that. It is very unfortunate that the municipality missed the probably hottest real estate market of our lives over the last four years, but we are where we are, and we're going to focus on doing things right and moving forward. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the process of how we do that, and then some of the key principles that I think may have been getting lost over the last few years, just so we have clarity around what it is we're trying to do, how we're going to be approaching this, and ultimately, how we share and are transparent with our community as we move forward. There were a couple of processes that were undertaken, that initiated under Mayor Smith's previous council from 2014 to 18, followed by a subsequent process over the last term of council. Through both processes, there were three developers, Fram, Slocker, Baylock with Zancor as a partner, and Slate, all three of whom went through a rigorous vetting process to determine that they had the capability of undertaking redevelopment in partnership with the municipality. The recommendation of staff is not to start from scratch again. I think the community's tolerance for this is wearing thin, as is all of ours. We have three well-respected developers who are capable of pulling this off. The recommendation is to focus on reaching out and re-engaging with all three, and see of the three whom would be interested in working with the municipality. And it could, we just need one, or it could be all three, and potentially leaving the door open to some form of partnership, should any one or all three wish to partner amongst themselves. The approach would be a limited tendering opportunity, which is transparent. We already have three vetted developers, and we would set some criteria around how they would engage with the municipality and the time within which they would work. Before setting that criteria and timeline, I think the first step would be to reach out to all three and see if they're interested in working with us. Assuming they are, we would want to run a fairly quick process, but still give everyone an opportunity to do it properly. And really, one of the missing ingredients over the past few years has been a solid plan that the development, that the developer is comfortable with, that the community can look at and understand, okay, I get it, that's where we're going, and then we can all rally around and get it built. I'm going to suggest that three months is an appropriate timeframe to have a plan like that created, and that would be an overall plan for town-owned lands with identification of Phase One opportunities. Because again, I think we hear loud and clear, staff hears loud and clear, that folks want to see stuff get built. So I think we need to zero in very quickly on what's Phase One, not only on the beachfront, but on the mainland side, on Main Street, and how long will that take? When can we see shovels coming, or buildings coming out of the ground? So it's a two-pronged approach, creating the overall plan, the phasing strategy, and then really focusing on Phase One to get things moving quickly. The report talks about some of the principles that, again, I want to be respectful, but I think may have been getting lost over the past few years. We engaged in an intensive and transparent process with the community back when I previously worked here, 2014 to 18, to understand what the residents were looking for and what they wanted to see as part of redevelopment. And one of the concepts that came through loud and clear is the notion of building a dependable destination. Many of us who grew up in Wasaga Beach recall what was here and what has been lost, and whether it's rainy, snowy, windy, cold, there needs to be things to do. Wasaga is about experiences, and that's why an ambassador program is so important. You're selling an experience. That's what Disney does. They sell an experience. We're building a community for locals first, and we should never lose sight of that. This is about locals first, but our business is tourism. We need to do it well, and we need to make sure that the experiences we are delivering are world-class. And when somebody is debating, do I spend $5,000 or $10,000 to go to Disney for a week, or do I spend the same money or more to come from Wasaga, to Wasaga for a week, that the choice is clear, that we're offering an experience here that is world-class? When you simply sell your lands, as the municipality was exploring over the last few years, to a private developer, developers are smart. They need to make as higher return on investment as they can. Delivering experiences are not necessarily top of their list of things to do. Left to a developer, they will probably want to focus on residential and building as many condos as they could. Again, no fault of their own, I would do the same thing if I was in their shoes. As a municipality, I think the onus on us is to listen to our community and really focus on experiences, bringing the fun back, and working with a developer to ensure that we deliver the complete package moving forward. Much of that is getting back to basics. And again, for those who don't remember what Wasaga was like, there are many who have moved here recently and look out or walk around and think that's what was always here. Look at the historical photos, talk to some folks that have been here a while. The rides, the amusements, the haunted houses, et cetera, kids walking around with ice cream cones and candy apples, that's part of what this place is about, that's part of our DNA. There was a formula that worked here for over a hundred years, and it worked really well. It worked for a couple of months, so our goal is to learn from that formula and expand it into a year-round approach. But the formula was good, and when we're redeveloping, you always look to your past to inform your future. So when we're reinventing ourselves, learn from the past, the worst thing we can do is just take a complete ninety-turn and go in a direction that just doesn't fit with Wasaga Beach. And I was a little concerned with what I saw over the past few years, that that may have been some of what was happening. Mixed use is absolutely critical. If anyone believes that that beachfront or the downtown can redevelop with single land uses, either residential or commercial, that is not the case. It needs to be mixed use, and for businesses to survive, you need people. It doesn't matter if the people are living in a rental, housing accommodation, Airbnb, hotel, condo, it doesn't matter. We just need people to be able to support businesses. Village of Blue, we have a great example in our backyard of how to keep businesses surviving year-round. And the interesting thing about Blue, they were the reverse to us. They had a seasonal economy that was based around winter, we're seasonal based around summer. When those businesses first went in, they were very afraid that they wouldn't be able to survive in the summer months. They focused on great quality mixed-use development around experiences, and talk to any operator over there, and they'll tell you August is their best month now, which shows, if you do it right, you can actually create good year-round product. We can do that here, too, but it's really important that we get all of the ingredients correct. Market absorption is very important for us to understand. The bigger you build, the longer it takes. If you want to build big, giant condos or mixed-use development, it takes longer to get out of the ground. So the scale that you build is important. We're in a bit of a precarious market right now. We need to be sensitive to that, given the desire to see things happen quickly. So that's part of what we need to be thinking about. And the last comment I'll make is the approach we take. In 2014 to 2018, we were very deliberate in bringing forward a partnership model or joint venture. Over the last few years, the municipality was focusing on a sale, a straight purchase and sale. Both approaches will deliver very different results. It is my strong recommendation that a partnership model is the best approach for Wasaga Beach for a number of reasons. Number one, being able to control what actually happens down there. The municipality is in majority ownership of the lands on the beachfront. That means we are in a position to influence what actually gets built. And if all the stuff I just mentioned, creating a dependable destination, focusing on experiences, et cetera, if that matters to our community, which we heard loud and clear that it does, that's the best way of ensuring that that kind of stuff happens. If you do a straight sale, again, the developer is focused on ROI, that may not be top of their list, and if your policies don't require that it be part of redevelopment, it's likely not going to be part of redevelopment. A partnership also is likely the best approach at maximizing return on investment and unlocking the value that's down there. Appraisals come in and can tell you that your land is worth X, but unless you actually have the ability to make a development happen, it's somewhat irrelevant. However, the best way to unlock value is on a phased approach in a partnership model, where wherever we identify as Phase One, land does not change hands until a developer is ready to pull a building permit. And at that time, land is appraised and fair market value is paid for that land. Then you move on to Phase Two, once successful completion of Phase One. What that does is it allows the municipality to reap the added value that is being created. Phase One gets built, the land next door all of a sudden is worth more, because you've got a great product right beside it. So as you go, the land value increases, the municipality will make a better return on investment. If you're doing a straight sale today, any developer is going to come forward and say, I need to get it for as low cost as possible. That's exactly what was happening to the municipality, and the values that were coming forward were dramatically below market value, because that landlord needs to control that land for fifteen to twenty years. They don't want to spend a lot of money to hold those lands. So in the best interest of taxpayers, delivering the quality of place that we're looking for, reaping increased value, adding value to our community partnership model, in my opinion, is the best approach to take. So then, in conclusion, the next steps would be reaching out to the developers we've identified, gauging level of interest in working with us, establishing criteria around a limited procurement with a set timeframe on it, ideally three months, which would bring us to about Q2 of this year, and then bringing forward recommendations to council. I could talk for a while on this, I'll stop now and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. What exciting news. I'll go first, please, to Mayor Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Andrew, for the report and speaking to it. I think it's important that the council of 2014 to 18 made this purchase, because what we understood back then was you cannot control what you do not own. And although that purchase may have been a great news for some and not for others, I wholeheartedly believe, sitting here today, that it was the absolute best thing we could do for this community. I stand by that decision and by the council of that day to do so. And although it is very disappointing that we've lost the best four years of development we'll probably ever see in our lifetimes, and although that angers me a bit, it's, we will move on, and we will move forward, and we will persevere, and we will win, but it is what it is. And so values of this land are vitally important, important to ourselves to move forward and to make the community whole, or better than whole, and important to the developers that we will be dealing with in the future as to what they are going to be looking at. And what we know is that lands were appraised in the past, deals were put in place, some lands were purchased for more than appraisal, and some lands were perhaps sold, or potentially sold for much less than the appraisal. And so the one question, and I don't expect an answer necessarily right now, but I would like to know, is when can we make that information public? Because I think it's vitally important that the citizens of Wasaga Beach have that information, so as that they can understand why it is we're doing what we're looking to do as we move forward. And I can tell you that, again, in my previous council, and I hate to dwell in the past, when we did a transaction, such as the beachfront, such as the Archives Building today, when that deal was completed and was done, that information was made public. The taxpayer have a right to know what's happening with their dollars. And yes, there are situations and instances and timeframes as to when any council can allow that information to be public, but it should be public, and I encourage this council to collectively make sure that we are doing that moving forward. Cannot control what you do not own, and I couldn't agree more with the CAO in this case, that the best way to sell these properties is to sell them as one-offs, if you will, when the time is right. And that doesn't mean we're not going to give our chosen developer, whoever that may be, first right to purchase those lands based on the current market value at the time, but based on current market value at the time is vitally important. I think we bring a lot more dollars to the coffers of the taxpayers of Wasaga Beach because we're doing that. And so I thank you for that in the report, and it's a very strong point. I also want to point out that we cannot start over, we must move forward, and we do have three very strong developers who have been at the table and are all very capable. And I'm quite confident that we can work with any of those developers or a combination thereof. And they're all well-respected. Two of them have not done a lot of business in Wasaga Beach, but have in the surrounding area, and of course, Baylock, Zancor has done a ton of work in Wasaga Beach and is a very well-respected developer. So I'm looking forward to those RFPs, if you will, or REOFI's, and seeing who comes to the plate and where we end up. But I'm confident, no matter where that is, we'll be in good shape, because we've got three very well-respected proponents at the table. So we're in really good shape from that standpoint. It's now about, you know, putting the rubber to the road and making it happen, and I have all the confidence in our staff. So it's the reason I pulled this report, to speak to it, again, just to let the good folks of Wasaga Beach know that we're on task, and we understand the frustrations, and we understand the challenges ahead, and we've got the right team in place, and I'm confident that we're going to see some great things happen as we move forward. So just back to my question, and maybe staff will need to look into this, but I'd really like to know when we can release some of this information from the past.
Mr. McNeil?
Yep, through the Madam Chair. We can, should, and will release that information. The one thing I would ask is that if we can have a quick discussion with our lawyer, just to understand if there's any privilege that we would be perhaps violating. I know a lot of this was dealt in closed session with council, some, not all, was actually disclosed to council. So there's some issues there we want to have comfort around, but I'm very confident that we can disclose this information. The other element that I would put out there is we are at the beginning of a potentially additional limited tendering process, so I just want to be sensitive to timing. We don't want to do anything that would perhaps impact that process. So if we can come back to council and share with you when an appropriate time would be, but we absolutely agree that that information should be disclosed.
Go ahead, Your Worship.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a Just to supplement to that, so I agree that we probably want to wait till the right time. I do think it's important for the citizens of Wasaga Beach to know that information. And so I want to be clear, and I've said this many times. There should be no animosity towards any developer that has been working with the town in the past. All have acted in good faith and all are shrewd businessmen and women that are doing what they should do. And that's the best for their corporation in order to work with the community or any proponent for that matter to move forward. So want to be clear, again, that the developers we're going to be dealing with here are top-notch, world-class, and have the ability. And I think probably the confidence of myself and staff and council as well. We just want to make sure that the plan and the vision, if you will, moving forward is what's suitable. And I just also like to point out that I will be pushing hard, and I don't think that'll be too hard to do with council and staff to make sure that as we go through this process, that we are as open and transparent as we can possibly be and that we have as much public consultation once that proponent is chosen and even before, if possible, with the good folks of Wasaga Beach to make sure that we're hearing loud and clear what it is they're looking for. I'll qualify that by saying we'll never make everybody happy, but I'm confident we're going to do the very best we can and create something special here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I'll turn to Counselor Boulanger.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schnell. I pulled the item first and foremost to ensure that publicly our CAO could summarize his thoughts verbally. But living through the process of the last four years, there are a few comments I want to make. One is, one of our significant consultants had made it very clear that a single developer was probably preferred. Two developers is very workable. And beyond that, they were a little concerned. So I guess the one point I wanted to make, and I believe it's part of the thought process, is that if we do go with more than one developer, that can have some benefits and advantages, that we do select a lead developer to ensure the continuity of design and vision. So that was one thing. The other thing is that when we talk about experiences and entertainment aspects and who knows where that could go, but certainly there may be developers or companies with a level of expertise that would be added to the project. So I would like that, you know, in whatever we write in is that there is that flexibility, whether they partner with one of the selected developers or whether they're brought in for a specific component of the project, that that's considered. The other last point, I just want to clarify. When we talk about making some things known, it wasn't clearly mentioned, but our council had the opportunity to extend the development agreement process with the last council's preferred developer. And we chose not to extend. And that's the information I believe our worship was referring to, is that the public needs to know why another delay? Why did we choose not to extend? And I want to tell you that personally, I think there's a little validation for me is that I opposed some of what went on, particularly the values of the property. And I was pretty heavily sanctioned for that, lost 30 days' pay. And I think that through this process, people will understand that maybe my concerns were warranted. So with that, I'll end my comment. Thank you.
Go ahead, Seale.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try and go through each one of these very, very quickly. With respect to development partners, you raise a very important point. I know development of town-owned lands, in particular the beachfront, is a big deal for every resident of this town. It's important to understand, in the scheme of development across the province, it's not a big project. It's a medium-sized project. So if you dilute it too much with multiple developers, you potentially run the risk of losing the interest of multiple developers. That said, I think what we have said and what council, subject to your approval, is that we're okay, should they choose to partner. That's a decision that they would make and they would have to understand what the terms of that would be. It's certainly not required any one of the three have the ability to do this on their own. But you make a very important point, that there does need to be a lead. There can't be three leads. There does need to be one lead, and that's who the municipality would work with primarily. The other partners, should they choose to be there, it's recommended that they be silent partners and simply financial partners. But again, that's for terms for the development community to figure out, but it is actually quite an important point. The other point you made about the experiential side, you're absolutely right that in any one of the three, delivering that type of experience is probably not their core business. So there would be the need to bring additional experts to the table. When you're working in partnership, it can be brought by the municipality. It can be brought by the private developer. But the important thing is that it comes to the table and is part of the package. So that's the beauty of a partnership, is you can make sure that that doesn't get overlooked. With respect to the deal, I will not comment on the details of the deal other than saying, from my professional perspective, I would not have been comfortable recommending the deal that was in place, that council proceed with that deal for reasons that we will get into later. I don't believe that it was going to deliver the essence of what we just all talked through. And then the financial terms were certainly not favorable to the municipality. But I want to make it very clear, that's not in any way to disrespect the development partner that was at the table. Again, they did their job and we'll move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other further comments or questions?
Okay, just one myself. I really, really enjoyed your opening remarks and sort of the fulsome information that you provided in regards to the beachfront. I think we all clearly heard that throughout the election, that this was a great concern, very top of mind, for all of our residents in regards to what is going to happen down there. And I agree with council about the lack of information that has come forward so far and some from us as well because it's happened enclosed. So, you know, the community is still experiencing that a bit. I would ask if there's a way that someone is able to section today's presentation from when you started in regards to this particular matter up till maybe this point or something and post it so that folks are, and promote it so that folks are able to just quickly click on a link and get the report directly from our CAO's paper and microphone to be fully up to speed in regards to where we're at. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. The one thing I would add, one of the recommendations in this report, is also to hold a public meeting. And my recommendation would be to do that fairly soon, in March, April. There's a lot of information that the community is craving to understand. What were we trying to accomplish? How were we trying to do it? How did the wheels fall off, et cetera? So the best thing we can do is be open and transparent and explain to the community where we're at, why we're here, and how we're approaching moving forward. So my recommendation would be to hold that meeting. We certainly did this in the past when I previously worked here at the RecPlex. And I have to tell you, this is probably one of the most engaged communities I've ever worked in. And I know consultants that we're working with us were blown away by the level of engagement. So I look forward to doing that fairly soon and sharing as much of that information. But we can certainly do our best to make this accessible in an easy way as well.
Thank you very much. And just to your point about the meeting, I'm excited about that. And I think when we look at the previous report in regards to the latest census data, we have so many new residents who have moved in in the last four years, never mind the last eight years. So may not even be aware of the amazing work that was done previously in regards to the beachfront development. So I think that will be very well-received. Thank you very much. Any other further questions? Okay, seeing none. This one's a long one. So that the report titled Recommendation Report Development of Town-Owned Lands in the Downtown Inclusive of the Beachfront to the Joint Committee at the Hall and Council Meeting of February 16, 2023 be received. And that Fram Building Group, Fram, Baylock, Zancor, Baylock, and Slate Asset Management LP, Slate, be invited to prepare development proposals based on a partnership model with the municipality to redevelop town-owned lands within the downtown inclusive of the beachfront. Number three, that the town work with Fram, Baylock, and Slate to determine an appropriate timeframe for the preparation of proposals with preference to have proposals prepared and submitted to the town by June 29, 2023. Four, that the town inform Fram, Baylock, and Slate that the municipality is receptive to receiving proposals from any one of the three parties individually or the municipality is receptive should any or all of the parties choose to partner and submit a joint proposal. Five, that staff report back to council following discussions with Fram, Baylock, and Slate to provide an update as to the interest in working with the town, progress, and a firm due date to receive proposals. Six, that a community meeting be scheduled for March, April, 2023 to provide the community with an update on the background process, strategy, and next steps for moving the redevelopment process forward. Seven, that staff have the ability to work with proponents during the proposal preparation period to provide feedback as requested by proponents. And eight, that staff report back with recommendations as to a preferred development partner for council consideration following receipt of submissions. So, and that, so I would be looking for a mover and a seconder. Counselor Boulanger and Mayor Smith, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That was the final item in general government. I will now, I will now pass the chair back to Mayor Smith for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schnell. And we're now going to move into our council portion, back into council. But before they do that, I think we'll take a 30-minute break so the public will be prepared to come back and then join us. So we'll reconvene at, let's say, well, let's say quarter after one. Does that work for you, Madam Clerk? All right, so we'll adjourn until quarter after one. All right. So we'll adjourn until quarter after one.
Thank you very much, and we'll call this meeting back to order and move on in our agenda. We rise and now move back to council, and we do have a motion resolved that the committee of whole session rise and move into council session to receive the report on the proceedings of the committee of whole session. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councilor Tim, seconded by Councilor Ego, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Moving on to item number eight in the agenda council session, consideration adoption committee of the whole recommendations. It is resolved that the recommendation of the committee of the whole session for the meeting of February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three be adopted as resolutions of council. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Councilor White, seconded by Councilor Belanger, all in favor. Carried unanimously. Moving on to item number nine on the agenda, the consent list. All items listed below will be approved by one resolution. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests it, in which case the item would be removed from the consent list and considered in the section for matters of consideration. We have none pulled at this time, correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on to item number one, which is the consent agenda, and it is resolved that the council session of the joint committee of the whole and council hereby receive the February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three consent list, item nine, and that all of the recommendations contained therein be adopted excluding agenda item pulled from the motion and voted on separately. Can I have a mover or a seconder, please? Moved by Councilor Tim, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snell. All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number ten, matters for consideration. We have nothing there, adoption of minutes, ten to the bylaws, nothing to, no matters to deal with it there at that point. And item number eleven, the council requested staff reports, so we have nothing there. Item twelve, closed session. We do have a resolution resolve that pursuant to the municipal act two thousand and one as amended, the next portion of the February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three joint committee of the whole and council meeting will move into closed session to consider the following matters. Twelve point one point one, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Section two thirty-nine two C, town-owned property matter. And twelve point one point two, closed session minutes, the regular minutes of the J CAC, which is joint committee of the whole and council, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a mover and a seconder to go into camera? Moved by Councilor White, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snell. All in favor? Carried unanimously. We'll now move into closed session. Thank you very much, and we'll call this meeting back to order and move on in our agenda. We rise and now move back to council, and we do have a motion resolved that the Committee of Whole Session rise and move into council session to receive the report on the proceedings of the Committee of Whole Session. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Tim, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snell. All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number ten, matters for consideration. We have nothing there, adoption of minutes, ten two, the bylaws, nothing to, no matters to deal with it there at that point. And item number eleven, the council requested staff reports, so we have nothing there. Item twelve, closed session. We do have a resolution resolve that pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, the next portion of the February 16th, 2023 Joint Committee of the Whole and Council meeting will move into closed session to consider the following matters. 12.1.1, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Section 239.2(c), town-owned property matter. And 12.1.2, closed session minutes, the regular minutes of the JCCAC, which is Joint Committee of the Whole and Council, February 9th, 2023. Can I have a mover and a seconder to go into camera? Moved by Counselor White, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snell. All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. We'll now move into closed session. Thank you very much, staff, and we're now coming back into open session. We'll do a rise and report. We did go into closed session, and we did pass a resolution about closed session meetings from a previous meeting, and we did have a discussion with respect to some negotiations on some town-owned lands. And so here we are, we've given direction to staff in that meeting, and now back into open session. And I do have a motion resolved that council confirms the confidential direction to staff regarding the town-owned property matter. Mover or seconder? Moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor DeLeo, all in favor. That motion is carried unanimously. Sorry, Counselor?
I'm from you. Is that on the February 9th?
On the February 9th, yes. But we were voting...
Exactly. So I can't...
No, sorry, just... For three, Your Worship. This is just for the first report received in closed session.
All right, so that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 12.2.2, closed session meetings resolved that council receive the following closed session reports as circulated and approves all actions contained herein. The regular meeting of Joint Committee of the Whole and council of February 9th, 2023 closed session meetings. Do I have a mover and a seconder for that? Counselor White, Counselor Belanger, all in favor. Motion is carried. And moving on to item number thirteen, confirmatory bylaw. 13.1, 2023-26, resolved that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the town of Wasaga Beach at its regular meeting held Thursday, February 16th, 2023 be received and to be deemed, when read a first, second, and third time, passed in number 2023-26. Questions or comments? Seeing none, a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor White, Counselor Tim's, all in favor. That motion is carried unanimously, and this meeting is adjourned.